Okay, Luke, I see you there on Zoom. I just want to let you know we're going to get started at six. And we'll do a little, I'll do a little bit of an introduction about the process. But we're taking comments starting a little shortly in a few minutes.
All right, everyone, it's 6:00 PM, so let's get started. We'll start off the record and I'll just give you some introduction information here. So first of all, my name is Michael Newmark, the United State of Law Judge for the Public Service Commission. It's the Public Service Commission that's reviewing the application, the Emerald Bluff Solar Farm. And we got the application at the end of 2024. And the commission's been reviewing that document, and we've been processing this case. Commission staff and the DNR are involved with analyzing the document and the getting more information from the applicant. Like I said, in the notice of hearing, we met on Tuesday, I received evidence from the applicant and and commission staff on the case. So the documents that I had accepted on Tuesday and the transcript of the hearing are part of the record in the case. And that's the documents that the commission will use to make its decision on the application. The commission has the authority to approve the application, approve it with modifications or conditions, or deny the application. It has to use only the record to make its decision. That's the only information it can use to base its decision. But part of the record is also the public comments. So we've been taking public comments for the record starting August 19th. We have over over 100 comments in writing so far. But today's our opportunity to get comments live. And also, we have the written comment period is extended up until Monday. So if you do want to, if you don't want to speak today, there are some options. Of course, I want to make this a very comfortable and respectful atmosphere. People want to make their comment. Please feel free to do that live. We may get, you know, opinions on both sides of the issues here, but I know we can all be respectful and get everyone a chance to comment. The important thing about when you're speaking a comment is that you speak slowly and clearly because we're transcribing what you say. The written transcript is what I'll give to the commissioners to read. We're live streaming and it's going to be recording on YouTube of the hearing, but that's more of an unofficial sort of convenience file for people to refer to, but the official document is going to be the transcript. So yeah, when you're talking, speak slowly and clearly because our court reporter is going to follow along. And we don't want to have any interruptions or people talking over the person making the comments. So please be respectful that way. Like I mentioned before, if you do have a question that you want answered before you make your comment, feel free to approach the applicants in the back row or commission staff or both. But then when you're going to be, if we're kicking a comment, please exit the room when you're talking so we don't have interruptions there. The other opportunities to comment, if you don't want to speak today, you can write your comment. If you're here, you can just fill out form and give it back to commission staff. We call these appearance slips. So let me back up a little bit. If you want to speak, you need to fill out a slip. Just fill out the personal information and check that you want to speak. Yes, I want to speak now. Give that back to staff and they'll give me your form. So I have like six of them, I think now. And when we get started, I'll just read out the names. Have you come up to the front of the room, take a seat. I'll swear you in and have you give your comment. It's that simple. And if you don't want to speak, just fill out, write it up and fill it out. Again, submit that to commission staff. If you need more pages, we can give you more pages. Another way to comment is online. We have the link here for the online comment form. Or you can mail it to us. The address, the mailing address is on this form as well. It's getting a little, we need to get those comments in by Monday, so maybe we'll get a little close to the deadline if you want to mail it to us. So just be careful about that. Otherwise, that's kind of our process. We're taking comments. One thing I wanted to mention is we have Zoom connection here, so I have a couple of people here on Zoom. We've got to be managing all this technology here, Zoom, live streaming, all this stuff. So even though maybe sitting here, I may get distracted with stuff that's going on here, but have no fear. As long as we're recording your comment on the transcript, that's the important thing. So the commission can read it. But I mean, just need to be juggling some stuff, so I may not be locked eyes on you the whole time. Just want to let you know. So you have two people connected on Zoom so far. Much better turnout this evening, so I'm glad you guys showed up tonight. But we did have a 2:00 PM session. We got, was it one comment, I think? Yeah, one comment, but that's fine. And like I said, there's over 100 comments so far online. So, so again, happy to have everyone here. So I think that's all we need to review at this point. We'll get started. I'll show you how it's done with our first person here. I just want to make sure this is all set up okay. I'm just going to turn screenshot off and I'm going to get a lot bigger on the screen. Apologize for that. There we go. Oh, yeah, yeah. So like I mentioned, just one more thing. If you want to, we have a lot of these, so if you want to take one with you, it does have information with how to get documents in the case. That's the link on the top and there's a QR code you can just scan on your phone. That's, that way you can track documents and events happening in the case. That's a, that's a little bent bones there, so. All right, so let's call our first witness. It's John Walsh. Have you come up and take a seat here? Mike, I'm going to swear in first. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. And just give us your name first.
John Walsh.
Everybody here in the back? No? Okay. Get right in there.
John Walsh.
Yeah, better? Okay, excellent. Go ahead, on the record.
Okay. I would like to thank the Public Service Commission for holding this meeting. I believe the solar project is a great asset for our community. The solar farm will bring in a huge amount of tax revenue, over a million dollars per year. Solar panels are a clean and renewable source of energy. I'd like to thank you for your time.
All right. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
We have Lawrence Polistrani. That's close. Yeah, so let me apologize. I'm going to probably pronounce your name wrong. If there's a way to pronounce it wrong, I'm going to do it. I don't mean to, but I, I usually don't. I'm sorry, but anyway, just feel free to correct me. As long as you know who you are, then we'll get you up here. So let me swear in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, name?
Lawrence Polistrini.
Okay, go ahead.
And you're okay or?
Yeah, I think you're a little louder. Yeah, if you want, just make sure you're speaking with the mic.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name's Lawrence Polistrini. I'm here to comment as a private citizen and farmland owner here in Juneau County for the past 37 years. My farm's located approximately one mile from the site that is proposed in the permit application. Little background, over the past 35 years, I've managed and owned several technical services companies, serving a wide range of clients, including manufacturers, government agencies, and public utilities. My expertise includes environmental consulting and compliance, site remediation, and hazardous special waste recycling and disposal. I have personally conducted EPA regulatory site audits, working with highly qualified chemists, biologists, chemical engineers, and soil remediation experts. Additionally, I have more than 20 years of experience in data center design, infrastructure, and data analysis and predictive analytics. While I support renewable energy and specifically support solar energy, I do not support the CPCN request to convert 3,800 acres of our community's most productive farmland into a solar utility. My opposition is detailed in a petition I authored and submitted to the Wisconsin Public Service Commission and the Wisconsin State Assembly titled "Petition for Rejection of EDP Renewables CPCN Request for Development of Emerald Bluff Solar Park," dated March 29, 2025. This petition, reviewed and signed by 166 Juneau County citizens and landowners, urges the PSC to reject the permit application for several key reasons. Number one, concerns regarding zoning laws. Allowing outside merchant utilities to bypass local zoning laws and ordinances infringes on our community's rights. At a minimum, such projects should require approval from township and county boards. Currently, two bills, Senate Bill 3, SB 3, and Assembly Bill 7, AV 7, are under consideration in Wisconsin's state legislature to address this issue by enabling local towns and counties to approve or reject large-scale utility projects like this current application. The proposed site is zoned agriculture, which is defined as the practice of farming, including cultivating soil, growing crops, and raising animals. This definition does not encompass the installation of steel, glass, cabling, substations, transmission lines, and inverters for electricity generation. In contrast, an electric utility is defined as a company engaged in electricity generation and distribution in a regulated market. As a landowner, I was required to obtain a permit from my local township to build a pole shed. Yet a multi-billion dollar power company can construct a 3,800 acre electric utility without township or county approval. This disparity is unjust, and I respectfully request the PSC to reject EDP's permit request, or at the very least, pause any decision until after the Wisconsin State Legislature takes votes on HB 7 and SB 3. Second, farmland preservation. There's no logical reason for a utility-grade solar farm to displace such a significant portion of our most productive farmland. Although proponents claim the solar utility will be decommissioned and returned to agricultural use in 40 to 50 years, such restoration has never occurred in U.S. history and cannot be assumed. This industrial development would negatively impact our community, not only for most of our lifetimes, but potentially indefinitely. While I support solar energy and renewables, their implementation must be responsible and guided by common sense. Rather than displacing prime farmland, large-scale solar projects should be sited on barren, contaminated, or non-crop-producing lands. Our community and ancestors have spent the past 200 years protecting and nurturing our farmland. Solar energy is better suited for distributed use on rooftops, parking lots, and government buildings. I urge the PSC to reject this application and request that EDP identify a more suitable site on non-productive land away from densely populated areas. Third, impact on physical and mental health. This project has caused me personally significant distress as I sought this area out to escape urban and commercial environments and enjoy natural beauty. The prospect of this massive industrial development altering the landscape and ecosystem is saddening. With Wisconsin's power consumption remaining relatively flat for the past decade due to the improvements by LED technology, I believe this project is misguided environmental effort that may harm rather than help our environment. I request the PSC to reject this application. Financial burden. From my perspective, the project lacks sound financial rationale and will ultimately saddle local taxpayers and ratepayers with the cost of cleaning up the site when utility solar farms become obsolete or less competitive than alternatives such as next-generation nuclear energy. With the sun shining only 31.5% of daylight hours in this region, the project's return on investment is unproven at best. Without substantial federal and state incentives funded by taxpayers and our national debt, this project would not be viable. The estimated costs in the permit to restore the land to productive farmland use upon decommissioning are, in my opinion, insufficient and may herald a new wave of superfund-like contaminated sites, forcing utilities to raise rates to cover cleanup costs and burden future ratepayers. If this permit is approved, EDP, participating landowners, local governments, lawyers, construction workers, solar panel manufacturers, and future utility companies that might acquire the contracts are all compensated and make a very nice profit. Unfortunately, the full lifecycle cost burden for inevitably will inevitably fall on taxpayers and ratepayers to pay for this project. I again request the PSC decline this permit request and require all similar projects to remove 100% of all infrastructure, including wiring, materials, and contaminants remaining in the ground upon decommissioning. In conclusion, I ask the PSC to carefully consider the highly controversial nature of this decision regarding the Emerald Bluff CPCN permit request and similar applications statewide. I also urge consideration of Wisconsin State Legislature Bills AV 7 and SB 3, which would require local township and county approval for large-scale wind and solar farms in Wisconsin. Also, after reviewing the the public comments to date on the PSC site, it appears to me that the supportive comments, at least the large majority, are from individuals outside our area, outside the county, and in some places very far. In contrast, from my knowledge, and I can give more background on the petition, folks that I've talked to, the majority of people in our area around the site are against it. So at the very least, that's controversial to have two sides that are very juxtaposed. Thank you for considering my comments. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Don't go anywhere. So I did want to talk about the petition. I'm glad you came to the hearing. I'm going to share that on the screen. So I'm going to play. So that's the petition that was filed on our filing system, the PSC's filing system. It's PSC reference number 542065. And let me ask you, Lawrence, does that look familiar to you?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I have a copyright.
Okay, great. So just wanted, so I just, there's a, there's a process I need to follow in order to receive a petition like this. And the biggest thing is to have someone come to me and say, you know, I've, I've, this is my, the petition that I created and give me just some background about the process and how it was done. And and how you, so, so just with that in mind, if you could just describe to me the process that you took to gather uh, the process that you took to gather signatures and 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 how you secure, kept those signatures secure and how you, um, provided those to the commission.
Sure. Um, and I have a, have a written summary because I think it will be
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And then I can add to it.
Sure.
They're just the dates and so forth. So on April first, which is voting day here in town, my wife and I stood outside, uh, the voting station out of this, out of past a hundred feet. And, uh, we held a sign saying, "Save our farmland." And anybody who was wishing to vote had the opportunity to come and inquire what we were there for. Upon inquiring, we had copies of the petition. Uh, and we told them what the, you know, what was going on, and were they aware of the solar, uh, park that was, uh, in in the process of being permitted. Um, and, and if they chose to, we asked if you'd like to sign the petition, you may. Um, approximately half of those signatures came from, of the hundred and sixty six, came from standing out on that cold day. And, uh, people were very gracious. Um, ninety-five percent of the people were interested in it, and some said, hey, no, thank you, you know, for different reasons. And that's fine. Um, so that's where half of them came from. The other half, uh, there was a couple other like-minded folks in town here that, uh, one went door to door to some folks with with some of the sheets. And another is a business owner that had posted the petition, and if somebody had inquired about it, had the opportunity to sign there. And that, that all happened within like a five to seven day period. Um, we, there was, you know, a couple, a couple sheets like given to that store owner, they're collected back again. Um, one of the clear requirements we had was that you had to be a citizen of Juneau County or a landowner. Um, so that was something that we did require. When I, when I got them back in that five to seven days, I, I compiled and put it together with the document, scanned it, submitted it to the, uh, ERF system to, you know, upload it to the PSC.
Okay, great, thanks. That, that's, that satisfies me, uh, that there are real signatures from real people, and I have you verifying that the process. And, uh, you know, I will mention that there, this has never happened in Wisconsin because of the, the process that I, that I take, but there, there have been situations in other states where, uh, people have, uh, where petitions have been submitted, and then later, once they're reviewed, people, uh, will then, uh, complain that they never signed it. Their, their name was falsified on this document. It causes a lot of controversy. So I'm glad we've got, we've got this locked down, and I don't think there's any chance that that's gonna happen here, so. Um, so you see the document up here. Right now, it's listed on our IRF system as petition. Uh, what I'll plan to do is I'll, I'll switch that, uh, that classification to comment, and then I'll include that listing with the documents that I provide the commission as public comments. So it'll be available for them to review. All right, great. Um, anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. All right. So let's start off the record for a sec. I know we saw a few more people, uh, coming in here today. Um, just let you know, if, uh, you haven't heard, oh, sorry. If you haven't heard. Uh, there we go. If, you might not have heard the preliminary talk here, but, um, so I'm here just, I'm running the hearing. I'm the, uh, the administrative law judge for the Public Service Committee Commission. So I run the hearings and compile all the information that I provide for the commissioners to make their decision in the case. So it's the commissioners that are the decision-makers. And in this situation, they'll read the transcript of everything that we, all the comments that are made today, and they'll be able to review those comments in that format. Um, if you do want to speak, uh, I'll just need you to fill out one of these forms. They're in the back at the table. Uh, just, if you want to speak today, you just want to, um, fill out the personal information. It can be off the record. Did I, okay, I'm sorry. Um, you want to fill out the personal information here and then check that you wish to speak now. Uh, then hand it back to staff. They'll get me the form, and I'll have you in the pile here to take the next people for comments. Otherwise, you can also file a written comment, and staff can explain that to you. Uh, but let's move on. So we'll get back on the record, and we'll call Jane Powers. Jane, are you here? There you go. All right, I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Give us your name, please. Name, please.
Jane Powers.
Okay, sorry about that. So speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me? I want to start out saying that I harbor no ill will towards families that are selling their land or leasing their land for the, for the solar. We have a farm side by side for the last hundred and fifty years. We've been friends. And I respect their right to do whatever they want with their land. Um, I went to the PSC comment site, and I read most of the comments. Now, most of the people who wrote were for the solar. And I think most of them were from Milwaukee, Madison, the city, and I do not think, listen, reading their things, that they understood the destruction that would be caused by building a solar farm. Now, you are the Public Service Commission, and we are the people that you are commissioned to serve. In your letter to us, you wrote, "No significant impacts on the human environment that would warrant the preparation of an environmental impact study." I understand what that means. It means the bees and the birds, and we won't die of toxic poisoning. I understand that. But we are the human environment, and we will be impacted by this. Um, when you have three thousand eight hundred acres in your neighborhood destroyed, we are impacted. Um, you talk about all the jobs coming, and that's all temporary. Talk of all the money here, the money there, the schools don't get money, but everybody else gets money. Um, in twenty years, I feel that the solar will be obsolete and abandoned, and the land in Katchel Valley will be gone forever. A little bit back to the public comments, um, one person on the comment wrote, "Solar panels are so beautiful, and crops are so boring." Now, that's a city person. Personally, I think that every spring, seeing those perfectly straight rows and seeing those green spouts coming up are beautiful. And I think the dead weeds from the fall before all around the solar fences are not. Um, solar, I believe, is very good. I absolutely believe in distributed solar. I asked a fellow at one of the meetings at EDP, I said, "What would you do if your uh, neighborhood got filled with solar, up and down, the whole thing, in your yard, in your backyard?" And he said, "I would move." We can't. There are so many other ways to get good solar. I ask you, please, not to do something like this that really impacts your human environment.
All right. Thanks very much. Just that's some sort of delay. Catherine Duff, we have you next. There? Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Give us your name and comment.
Uh, Catherine Duff, and the reason why I'm here is, the reason why I'm here is that I, um, was not able to sign the petition in time. So I'm against the solar field destroying our farmland. I'm also against, um, the fact that EDP's, um, controlling shareholders are from China. And I'm also, want to make a comment that twenty years is not actually, um, accurate. I think it would be more like, so in two thousand and fourteen, they built solar panels in Mojave Desert. In two thousand and twenty-six, it's going to be demolished because the technology is now obsolete. And then what? We're left with just a mess. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mike Canesta? Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Give us your name and comment.
Mike Canestra. I live in Seven Mile Creek. Um, my main concerns are, um, about the cost of cleanup. And that if this thing gets approved, that, uh, they're not setting enough money aside for the cleanup, not taking into account, um, rising costs, inflation. And if that money is going in escrow or something where it can't be touched, that's great. If it's just going into the general budget of the townships, I don't believe that, um, it'll be there when the time comes by, and it'll be an unnecessary burden on my children and grandchildren because I'll be long gone by the time this thing is over with. Um, I also do believe that this is going to become obsolete sooner than anybody has planned because of the changes in technology. Um, just for an example, on the day we had our meeting here in this hall, um, the University of Wisconsin just did eight minutes of cold fusion. Okay, thirty years, twenty years is a long time for technology, and there'll be a lot of changes making this obsolete very quickly. Also, I really believe that, um, it's a shame that this power is, of course, going not anywhere to my house or anyone in the area. And so they're exploiting the rural areas for the cities and the larger communities, once again. So now, instead of flyover country, we live in wireover country. That's my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Lynell Asberg. Asbury, okay, sorry. I don't know if that was a G or a Y. All right, sorry, Anne. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, give us your name and comment.
Lynell Asbury. Um, I have a question. I actually have several questions. Is this the forum in which I can ask questions?
Um, well, I can, this is a forum where you can provide your, your opinion.
Okay.
And if it's that I have these questions that I, and I'm concerned about these, these things, and you can just ask questions as your comment, perfectly fine, whatever you want to say. In terms of having back and forth and getting answers, questions and answers, what I'm going to ask you to do is, um, we have the applicant here and commission staff here, so that's something you can do outside of the hearing.
Good.
But, um, but just put a pin in that and go ahead with what you want to say.
Um, in all honesty, thirty eight hundred acres is a lot of land, and solar panels, as everybody has said before, will become obsolete a lot sooner than what they think. Um, I do not agree with, um, this project. Uh, my questions are, anytime, um, in my past history of working, I worked for the federal government, and we had many projects like this where they came in. It was all bells and whistles, and it was wonderful, but it costs so much more money than what, um, the benefit to that actual agency happened. Uh, my questions are, and I will ask them later, are, are these projects federally, state, or locally subsidized? Who are the agencies that are subsidizing these projects? How long, excuse me, federal projects, um, are usually, um, appropriation bills are only either a year or three years or possibly five years. What happens when these projects are no longer subsidized? Who is going to have to foot the bill for those costs? And it has happened many a time. Um, I have my questions written down. Um, and that, that, those are my main questions because I've seen it many, many times where they come in. They, um, they come in and they do these projects to make everybody more efficient, but in the end, it costs so much more money because the only ones making any kind of money on this are the energy companies because of the subsidies. And that concerns me as a taxpayer, and it's concern, should concern everyone else as a taxpayer. Because in the end, who's paying for it? Not the energy company, but the taxpayer because of subsidies, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so. Look at that, there we go. All right, let's go off the record. Um, so that's all the appearance slips I have for people in the room who want to speak. Oh, we have a couple more coming. Um, we're gonna switch over to Zoom. I have two people signed up on Zoom, but we'll switch over to Zoom for now. If you'd like to speak here tonight, you want to get one of these forms in the back, uh, table. Uh, like I said, fill out your name, personal information, and then you want to speak now, there's a box, "Speak now." And, uh, hand it back to staff. They'll get me your slip, and we can take your comment. Uh, we'll just take them as they come. Um, if, if we get to a point where no one wants to speak, that's when we're gonna close out. So we, we go until people are done speaking. Um, got a couple people on Zoom. I'll take those now, and in the meantime, we will, um, await more comment slips. Uh, so let's see. Um, the order that people joined us, there's only three of you, so I think I got that straight. I think we have Luke Heath. If you want to unmute, let me know if you want to make a comment.
I have no comment.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
I have no comment. I'm just listening.
Okay, all right, thanks. Um, okay, I can give you, do you want me to give you the name? Okay, so it's H E A T H. Then a person joined us on the phone. Their phone number ends in one, six, one, five. Did you want to comment? If you want to unmute, you need to push star six on your phone. Sometimes it takes a minute. Okay, well, if, well, we'll stand ready to get you, get you if you do unmute. Uh, there's also someone with the screen name BLGUS. You want to comment? Let me know.
Thank you. I did submit an online comment already, so I don't need time now.
Okay, uh, it sounds like you may want to comment. Let's go off the record for a sec. If you do want to comment, you'll need to, um, turn on your screen and your microphone.
Sorry, I was just saying that I did submit an online comment, and so I don't need a verbal comment time now.
That's fine. I didn't hear you did. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, you don't need to, uh, comment twice if you're already done, so, um. Okay, so that's all the people on Zoom. Again, if you're the first one who called, just unmute when you can if you want to speak. So let's continue on with Ken Vendoran. Swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Sure, yes.
Give us your name and comment.
Ken Vendoran, Austin, Wisconsin. And, uh, some of my friends call solar, wind, ethanol a solution, a solution that doesn't work to a problem that doesn't exist. Each one of those things has significant flaws with, uh, how they're being implemented, and, uh, when you add up the total costs, um, it is a sure prescription for bankruptcy. Um, I remember when I was in college, uh, they were also worried about climate change back then. We have to do something, and we have to do it now. The glaciers are coming. Well, guess what? The glaciers didn't come, and the, and the climate warmed. But going back over a hundred and twenty-five years, New York Times four times has warned us about impending doom uh, because of climate change, alternately warming, alternately cooling. So there's that. And then the other thing, I think the other lady, or I mean, excuse me, the lady before me, she mentioned subsidies. I didn't hear her comments, uh, very clearly. But, uh, everything that's wrong with this is subsidies. Subsidies are a transfer of wealth from those who produce, uh, economic goods to those who consume economic goods. If it's such a good idea, why do we have to bribe people to participate, both as producers of, of equipment and as, uh, consumers? Um, it should, if it doesn't pan, uh, pan out, it's wasting resources. You know, the economics is the best way to determine the highest and best use, um, and so much of this, you know, if you include life cycle costs, it doesn't pan out. And less and until we have very cheap batteries that are quickly recharged or some other form of, of storage that we can't, uh, anticipate right now, um, I don't see that any of the so-called green energy is gonna work because you got a problem. When the sun doesn't shine and the wind doesn't blow, you'd either need to have, uh, alternate forms, and some people are saying, well, the grid is our backup. Well, that's BS. That's absolute BS because what we're doing now is we're, uh, building a lot of, of gas fires. building a lot of of gas-fired furnaces or power plants that can be fired up instantly. In fifteen minutes, they can be online. It takes like three days to get a uh traditional boiler boiler and water plant or a hot water steam plant uh up and running. And um uh it when there's peaks, the steam, the traditional places we've been uh doing um electricity production just can't get going to to take care of the peaks. So uh they have to be online all the time or uh we have to have these backups. And and to my mind, if we're using gas-fired uh power plants, that should be charged to the solar account because it's only in place because of the solar energy. And solar and and wind generally, they only produce at thirty percent of their advertised capacity. Whereas you're more like sixty to seventy percent in the more traditional forms of power. You know, there might be a a solar future, there might be a wind future, but not with the current technology, not the way the economy is structured. Uh, what we're doing, oh, the other thing is who's producing this stuff? China produces a great share of the stuff, so I'm paying higher taxes so that my dollars can be shipped to China to subsidize the people to produce for our our demand for so-called green energy. And with that, I think I'll uh let people ruminate on what I just said.
Appreciate that. Thanks. All right, that's all the appearance slips I have. Uh, there's still a lot of people here. What we're going to do is take a ten-minute recess. You guys can decide whether you want to speak or not and um uh in ten minutes, we'll reconvene and see what we get. So ten minutes brings us to about roughly uh six fifty or so. So ten to seven, we'll reconvene and see uh if there's any more comments. Thanks. Hello, I just see someone joined us by phone. Uh, we're in a recess until ten ten to seven. Then we're going to get back online and take more comments. So sit tight until then. Um, and we'll see if you want to speak at that time. Thanks. All right, everyone. This thing working? Uh, it's six uh fifty, ten to seven. Uh, so gave you a little bit of time to uh change your mind if you want to do make a comment. I don't have any appearance slips here. So it looks like there's nobody in the room that wants to speak at this point. Do you have someone who added on to Zoom? So we're going to ask them if they want to comment. And if they do, we'll just need everyone to quiet down so we can do that. So person who joined us by phone, uh, your number ends in seven, three, six. If you want to speak, uh unmute your phone. You have to push star six. Oh, there we go. Uh, did you want to make a comment today?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I hang on just a minute. I'm having a little trouble hearing. Hang on, hang on. Oh, that's not coming in. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we're having a little trouble. Let's, well, first I'm going to swear you in. Uh, then we'll take your comments. So raise your right hand and do swear or affirm. Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Oh, good, good. I'm glad I could hear you there. All right. So give us your name, please. Nope, no, I didn't catch that. I think we're having a little little bit of a glitch.
Hooker.
Okay, spell your last name, please.
H O O K E R.
Perfect. All right. So K E, oh, and your first name. We just need to get that too.
Yes.
Jeff J J J E F F?
E F F, yes.
Okay, perfect. So um so this is the Emerald Bluff Solar Project uh here at the PSC um public hearing, just so you know. Uh, so go ahead and give us your opinion on the on the project.
Okay, so I live in the footprint of the where the solar panels are going. And I would just like to say that personally, the fact that this had on my personal life as far as losing sleep, um, just on my family, uh talking to lawyers, talking to um realtors, talking to banks. It's been a a hassle personally. But I'll get into transparency. Transparency is a key to building a good trustworthy foundation to any network. And as we are neighbor properties up to the solar farm, we have all been able, we have all had been able to trust our neighbors. Transparency transparency has been lacking. Therefore, trust is not there. From the start of this, it was a secret. Neighbors signing non-disclosure agreements is the start of a broken foundation and a lack of trust. Many questions have have we had with few or open-ended answers. Counties getting millions, townships getting hundreds of thousands. This all seems dirty. Ask solar. We all know that solar is not the answer. If it was, the local LDC would not be asking you, the PSC, for a ten percent rate increase over the next two years. The legislature is now just voting on letting local governments, townships and counties a voice or a vote. And so letting these solar farms consume thousands of acres of rural land. Why are they doing this? Because these solar farms have had no regulations and no rules. They do as they please. And if you bring bags to make an omelet, so be it. I am asking you to say no to this solar farm. Or at least delay this for the outcome of legislative bill. So we can have a say. So we can have a vote. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks very much. I think um so you broke up a little bit when you're speaking, but I think we have what you said on our trend uh in the closed captioning. So we'll think that we have a complete uh comment from you. Well, thank thanks for commenting and uh we'll see if there's anyone else wants to comment. Yep, thanks. We do have someone else connected by phone uh that ended in six one five. And I didn't hear from you yet. Need to push star six to talk. There we go. Did you want to comment? Not hearing anything.
Another one. Hello?
Yeah, hey. Uh, so if you want to make a comment in the Emerald Emerald Bluff Solar Project, I'll need to swear you in and get your name.
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Chuck Shukas.
Okay, go ahead. Can you spell it for us?
S H U K A S.
And that's your last name? What's your first name?
Correct. The first name is Chuck, Charles, whatever.
Perfect. All right. So let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, go ahead with your comment.
Okay, I'm against the solar panels and stuff. Uh, you know, they could put these things on top of buildings in the city and shopping centers there. Why ruin the land that you got there? You're not going to be able to replenish the land. You know, it's it's kind of ridiculous. But they're they're all, but they're going to be like somebody said, it's going to be obsolete in no time at all because just like your computers are obsolete in what a couple of years and you got to throw them away and get a new one or upgrade them. So I'm a I'm against it. That's about all I have to say against it.
All right, great. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
We have uh Chuck and no one else on Zoom that we haven't heard from. So I know no other appearance slips. So at this point, we're going to wrap up. I want to thank everyone for uh coming here today, coming out here and joining us. I appreciate getting the comments and I'll forward these over to the commission. They'll review them along with the other evidence in the case. When they make their decision, they'll have that in front of them. And um they'll meet an open meeting in Madison, which will also be uh on on our YouTube channel, uh live uh presentation of that. If you want to follow along, um I mentioned on these forums, feel free to take one home. Uh, but there is a link to the case page that we have, and that'll give you details about filings in the case and the events that are occurring in the case. So that's one way to keep posted on the events coming up. Uh, otherwise, I also want to thank the lodge for this great room and um appreciate all the help we had uh making this happen. So thanks very much. We're adjourned. Take care.